Thank you for coming. It's called to order, City Clerk.
This is the roll call for the City Council and Authority. Councilmember or Authority member, Chris.
Present.
Johnson. Ma'am.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Motion to excuse Sergeant Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Uh, can I say something?
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting, City Clerk.
Agency Director, Chris.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chair Sato.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, the invocation will be with Pastor John Guy from Lancaster, left district.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you on this evening and we thank you for your goodness and your grace in our lives. I thank you for this great city and I thank you for those represented here. I do pray your blessing not only upon this meeting but also upon our city. I pray your favor and I pray that you be glorified in all that we do. We ask these things in your son's name, amen.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ma'am, you want to do the flag?
If you would face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Brendan Baker here? Brendan, do you have your speech ready?
Uh, no.
They told me that you, you just love to get out in front of public and speak. Is that true?
Yeah.
You know, the first time I was up there, told me to do the pledge of allegiance. My voice cracked. I mean, it's, it's amazing. We'll get past it soon. Brendan is a freshman at Christian, Desert Christian High School, was the winner of the 2012 Streets of Lancaster Pro Kart Challenge in the Tag Junior Class and is currently third in overall points heading into the season's final race, the Super Nationals in Las Vegas. That's on November fourteenth through eighteenth, 2012. Now, understand what that means. This is the, this is where they bring the Indy car drivers is right out of the go-karts. That this, this kid is going to be famous before we blink our eyes. So get his autograph now, get a picture with him now, it's going to be worth something someday. Brendan won the 2009 International Karting Federation Grand Championship in the HPV class. He won the 2008 International Karting Federation California State Championship in the Rookie Sportsman Division. He was the 2008 International Karting Federation Rookie Sportsman Runner-Up at the Grand Nationals. He holds nine International Karting Federation Region Seven wins in the Cadet Class. He has a cumulative GPA of 3.5 and is a member of the Principal's Honor Roll. He is a volunteer for Operation Gratitude, which prepares care packages and writes letters to our troops, uh, serving in the Middle East. The, but, have you ever rolled a go-kart?
No.
You know, you've got something to look forward to.
I'm not supposed to be.
That's what they say is, it's impossible to do that. Uh, I missed this year's race. My wife wouldn't let me go. Uh, sixty years old and she's still telling me what to do. Anyway, here's a presentation from the City of Lancaster. Let's get a picture. And, come on up. So this is the father that makes you go out there and risk your life, weekend after weekend after weekend. Where do you get your parenting skills? Nice to meet you. And you get a thousand dollar scholarship. Okay, we have a presentation from Manlo Valley High School Principal Matt Anderson and Assistant Principal Chris Gredo. Chris, you're not principal yet? What?
I hope not. We'll see next week. Good evening, Mayor Paris, members of the council and city staff. I wanted to come tonight, Chris and I wanted to come and simply say thank you. Thank you to the city for the tremendous support that you guys have given to Manlo Valley High School this year, in, in last year and in the years past. But I go back to last year with the Martin Luther King Work Day where the city threw their support behind Neighborhood Impact alongside with Neighborhood Impact. It was one of the greatest days in the history of our school. Our students still talk about it, school looks better for it, and the boost that it gave to the school has really driven us into this school year, connecting our students with what's going on in the city, really connecting with the Boulevard, which is big for our school. And we wanted to specifically tonight say thank you for your support with our homecoming. On October twelfth and thirteenth, we have a big centennial, a hundred-year celebration for AV High School, and the city has really done a great job at supporting us. We are bringing back with your help, um, an old tradition at AV of the homecoming parade down Lancaster Boulevard. And what Chris and I wanted to do was come and simply say thank you. We also wanted to invite, um, members of, of the council and members of the city staff to join us and be a part of the parade if you would like on one of the floats, and, um, we can get you more information for that later, but we wanted to throw that invite. We're excited about it, our students are incredibly excited. We feel a close connection with the city and specifically the Boulevard being where we are in our proximity to the Boulevard. Um, and we want to be a school that represents this area of town very well. And so Chris actually has a couple of things we wanted to give you as gifts, and then, um, we'll kind of step back. Well, what Chris is handing out is we've made Centennial lapel pins this year. These were designed by one of our students at AV. Um, we had a contest where about ten students submitted a design. This one was chosen and we've made Centennial lapel pins out of that, and Chris is handing those out. And, um, also, Chris has some informational flyers for you guys relating to our Centennial Weekend, which is coming up on October twelfth, thirteenth, and then it's also in conjunction with the Old Timers BBQ at the fair on the fourteenth. So, thank you very much, AV High School, really appreciates the support. It's a great school and I feel like great things are going on there, and a lot of it is, um, because of the tremendous community support that we're getting, so thank you.
You know, you guys really turned that place around. It was truly phenomenal what you're doing there.
In a good couple of years.
You know, a lot of people didn't give you any chance in, well, any chance at all in, in being able to accomplish what you're doing, and, uh, I'm incredibly impressed.
I appreciate it, and, and to, to play off of that, we really are drawing off the energy from the Boulevard. This is our community and we really do feel a connection and what's going on here really has impacted AV.
It's great. Thank you.
Football team is four and oh, coming off a forty-eight-nothing win over Lancaster High School. We're very excited about that.
We're talking about turning the student body around into actually getting incredible grade point averages, and you ask about the football team?
Hard.
We have got to change our priorities. Well, I'm glad the football team's doing well, but what I'm really happy about is the grade point average is going up. That, that is just terrific.
Well, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We, we have this debate all the time. Okay, uh, oh, we gotta redo the picture. You were late for your son's presentation?
They'll just have to win again.
You ran out of gas?
Really?
That's incredible. I love it. You gotta teach your mom how to drive. You guys have to be really proud.
Thank you so much.
Because we're really proud of them. Thank you.
You are proud.
Okay, moving on. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendars consist of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the authority or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda or non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Let's do away with that, Mark. Let's do away with that admonition for a while, I don't think we need it. Okay, if we need to bring it back, we will. Uh, anything to be removed? Uh, no, sir. This time, I'm turning the meeting over to Chairman Sato of the Housing Authority.
Do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Housing Authority regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
The minutes are approved, I will turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris.
Boy, you guys have been busy. Any speaker cards for the council minutes?
No speaker cards.
Uh, do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the, uh, City Council Successor Agency Financing and Power Authority Regular Minutes of September eleventh, 2012?
Move to approve M1.
Second?
I'll second that.
And it's three with me abstaining. Okay. Any items on the consent calendar to be removed?
Nope.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
Second.
It's unanimous. Uh, okay, new business one, graffiti abatement volunteer program. We'll hear from?
Any speaker cards?
There's no speaker cards. I think I want to do it anyway. Uh, Robert Neal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce a program that staff has been working on to allow businesses and residents to get involved in the abatement of graffiti in their neighborhoods and on their businesses, and to ask for your approval to proceed with this program. In a, in a couple of minutes, Rob and Rector and Pat Murphy on our staff will give you the details of the program, but I wanted to give you my own experience because a program like this would help people like me. I, I live in a, a neighborhood that I like. Uh, I live on a corner lot with a wall along one of the streets. Uh, a little while back, I got a frantic phone call from my wife saying that it had been tagged, and it'd been tagged for the second time, and she was just plain angry. She felt like the neighborhood wasn't safe anymore. I tried to assure her that it would be quickly taken care of by the graffiti crew. Driving home that night, I saw the entire street had been hit. There were tags on people's mailboxes and on sidewalks and some of the side yards and even on someone's RV. Uh, when I got home, my wife said the graffiti hadn't been removed while it hadn't been taken care of. I told her, well, it was a specially busy day for the graffiti crew, which I happen to know to be true, but she said, uh, well, maybe I should call the mayor because he gets things done. Like I said, she was mad, uh, but, uh, oh, well, when, when the crew got there the next day, they found a little blue paint patch on my wall because that was the only color I had in the garage to take down that graffiti. So I, for one, am excited that if the City Council approves, residents and businesses who want to get involved will be given training, paint, solvents, and the authority to abate graffiti in their neighborhoods and places of businesses. I will tell you that I think our crews do a pretty good job of abating graffiti, but graffiti is on the rise, and in fact, this year, uh, we're on track for maybe removing two, twenty thousand different, uh, graffiti incidents, incidences. Uh, I think this program will bring focus on this type of vandalism, uh, that this kind of vandalism gives a wrong kind of image about what Lancaster is all about, makes people unsafe and reduces property value. But I also want to be clear that, uh, we will still have our graffiti crews working and people are still invited to call us, uh, call in graffiti and our crews will come out and we will do, we will remove it as quickly as possible. But for those who want to help out, who are looking for a faster response time, uh, I, I have Rob and Rector here who's going to join me and tell you about the details of the volunteer program. Is it Robin?
Before you do that, do we have a explanation as to why it's rising?
Uh, I don't. But we'll, we'll show you some statistics.
Do we, do we know what the, what kind of graffiti's landing? I mean, is it gang-related, is it not gang-related? What?
Well, I, I got some experts here that'll answer that question for you, so.
Okay. If we don't have those answers, I'd like them within the next thirty days, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mayor Paris, council members. I'm Robyn Rector, I'm the Senior Analyst in the Public Works Department. In response to inquiries from our, from our residents, this graffiti volunteer abatement program was developed. It was developed to foster community involvement and remove graffiti before it multiplies. Graffiti creates a negative impact on the community, and the city of Lancaster seeks to safely empower our residents and businesses to remove graffiti as it happens by providing training and the tools to do the job. Robert, you can tell me which one. Oops, wrong one. Thank you. During the past three years, we've seen a dramatic increase in the incidence of graffitis that we, that has been reported. Um, some of this increase is noted between 2008 and 2009, we implemented the graffiti tracker program in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department to track the different incidence of graffitis, the type of graffiti that occurs. Um, we do take a picture of it, it gives it a GPS location so that we can go out, um, if we get enough incidences and they're able to find the, the person who has, has done the graffiti, we're able to take them to court and hopefully get restitution against those, those incidents. Uh, they are noted, um, in the graffiti tracker program, it does track whether it's considered a tag, a gang incident, or something of, along those lines, so they can tell which type of program it is or which type of, of incident it is. Um, in addition, in December 2008, the city was able to purchase a graffiti truck. The graffiti truck is fully equipped with the equipment for removal and for paint matching for certain locations where we can't use what is considered Lancaster tan on standard walls. We can actually try and paint match so it doesn't look like we've put a big square on top of the wall. The graffiti truck has allowed staff to respond to more incidences, which is a reason you're seeing quite a big increase in that. But as of today, for 2012, we're projecting that the numbers will be even higher than they were in 2011. 2011, there was roughly a little over eighteen thousand incidents that were cleaned up by staff, and we project that to be closer to twenty-four thousand for the year of 2012. Staff has already found areas where residents have tried to help with the graffiti covering, and due to their lack of supplies and lack of training, it doesn't always occur as we would like to see it as a true removal of the graffiti. Um, in the bottom picture, our crews went in after this was reported and do, did a full removal of this graffiti incident. Graffiti occurs on most surfaces throughout the city. Some of the surfaces are very easily to abate the graffiti from. Uh, the great solvents are used, are used very well on the utility boxes, um, to remove the graffiti rather than painting over them, but there are areas such as the street signs, which we do ask residents to contact us about because they have a reflective coating on them and that if it's improperly removed, the coating will be gone and the sign will not be effective or be legal. Um, same thing with the sidewalks. The graffiti program is looking to provide Lancaster tan in general to the residents, but in sidewalks, we need to either paint that with gray or actually sandblast it off. When incident graffiti, the off, once an incident graffiti occurs, it often multiplies very quickly. This picture shows a section, section of the Amargosa Channel that, as you can see, has quite a bit of graffiti on it. This section of the channel is not visible from any street or residence, so staff was not aware of it until we entered the channel to do maintenance on, on the channel prior to the rainy season that's coming up. Now that this has been identified, it'll be removed by city staff. Um, this is an area that residents would not be allowed to go into unless through the program they sign up to do an, a, a ongoing event type of thing. We want to go in on this Saturday and we'll help remove the graffiti in the channel because they have to be allowed into this channel because it is gated and we want, and for safety purposes. Volunteers can choose to adopt a block or just become an active graffiti reporter. Volunteers choosing to adopt a block are encouraged to perform this service for a three-month period of time. This gives them a good opportunity to provide service to the public, provide service to their community, and get involved in their community. If an organization is introduced, interested in doing a clean sweep, such as like in the channel, we're more than willing in the program to, to allow them and to help them with their program so that they're able to implement it. Um, Pat Murphy's available now, he's going to explain how the volunteer, how to volunteer for the program and how the gra, what the graffiti kit includes and the different steps
Mayor Paris, City Council. Uh, my name's Patrick Murphy and my position here is I'm a coordinator with Public Works. Um, I get to be involved in a lot of really neat things such as recent streets of Lancaster. And, uh, Mayor Paris, I am also one of those crazy dads that puts my son in harm's way, who raised against Brandon Baker this year, but he had a really crummy mechanic, so we didn't finish our main event. Yeah, me. So, again, uh, I also get to be involved in the development of this program, and I'm really excited about that because as mentioned, this has potential to do a lot of great things with our community. You know, being able to adopt a, a channel like that, that's big, that's huge. You know, how do they do it? Well, let's get to the nuts and bolts of this thing. Contact me, we're going to send you through some training. Um, this isn't just for residents, this is also for business owners, for community groups, Neighborhood Watch programs, which I know we have some captains here tonight. That's going to be the nuts and bolts of this program. So how do they get involved? Well, they simply fill out an, an interest form, they bring it either back to City Hall, they can mail it, they can email it directly to me, uh, they will be contacted. At that point, we're going to send them through training because we don't want to send these folks out on the street. You know, we want to, we want to show them how to, to remove it properly. We don't want to be like that slide up in the top corner where it showed that yellow paint over our graffiti tag, because that's not what we're wanting. Let's get this to where they're doing it properly, to where it's going to look more like that bottom slide. So that training will consist of that, showing them how to do it safely, first of all, how to use the products that are in this kit, and, and do it correctly. The other thing that we're going to do in our training is we're going to talk about when to do it. We certainly don't want to put anybody in harm's way, so we're not going to send folks out at nighttime. This is a daylight operation only. Um, they're going to be provided with a vest so that they can be easily identified and that the public's not going to think they're a tagger. You know, they, they are actually doing a service for the community. And they're also going to learn how to identify some of the tags because we have identified what is a, just a graffiti tagger moniker, which is this DH up here, that's what that is. It's not a gang-related tag. And gang-related tags, we want them to notify the hotline because again, as Rob had mentioned, these are, these are identified through the graffiti tracker, in which now they're, they're put into these categories, whether it's just a, a tagger or now it's a gang-related. And if we ever apprehend these individuals, that's really important. So, again, talking about the safety of the volunteers, we don't want any of these folks to, to apprehend them. That's going to be part of my training to talk about that. If they see a tagger, call the Sheriff's Department, who we work very closely with in, in this program, or simply call the hotline. Say, I, I saw this individual and, um, I know where he lives and here's his address and allow the sheriffs to, to do their, what they've done so well for us, so. We do have a kit prepared for each volunteer. Basically, the kit consists of a can of paint, it's going to have a paint roller, a paint pan, rollers, brushes, it's going to have a vest, it's going to have, uh, a graffiti wipe, which is a solvent-based type material that they just wipe on, uh, even paint a surface, doesn't affect the paint. Again, that'll be part of the training where I'm going to be able to show these folks how to do this properly and, um, we're going to end up looking like the bottom slide. You know, that is in fact what we want. We don't want the checkerboards, we don't want, uh, to have that, audacity almost becomes unsightly as well. So we want to do this correctly, and I know what the volunteers in the City of Lancaster here, we're going to be able to accomplish this. This kit probably has to put a dollar amount on it, it's about thirty-five dollars. And the good thing is, this isn't over and above what's already budgeted for our graffiti abatement program. This is the same product that our staff uses every day. So it's the same color tan, it's the same type of rollers, we use a lot of airless sprayers, but these are the same products we're using, so there's no additional cost to the city at this point to do that.
Do you have a set of gardening clippers in there in case they catch somebody?
Um, I'll leave that up to the sheriff's task force to how they handle that, but this is basically the, the kit. Again, it's, it's what we use every day. And you don't have to be a volunteer to be involved in notifying our hotline and letting us know that there's graffiti out there. That also explains some of the numbers that are up because we do get a lot of calls from residents, and we're able to respond to those. You know, on that graph you saw earlier, you know, so we're, we're responding to them daily and these guys are getting them, but with the help of the citizens, we're going to be able to do even more. Uh, I think my, my goal, and I think the whole city's goal is to eventually, let's make this a graffiti-free city. I talked to somebody today from Manlo Valley Press, and she said, I wanted to go out and get some pictures. She says, you know, I had a tough time finding them. I said, good. That's good. That's what we want. And, and we want to make it to where you're not going to see them at all. Seeing them in that channel, that one slide, that's rare. We don't see it from the streets, so we don't even know it's there. But if we didn't have this program or we don't have the commitment to, to removing graffiti like we do, that's what we're going to end up looking like. like we do, that's what we're going to end up looking like, and we know we don't want that. So, Mayor Paris, Council, if there's any questions that you have regarding the program, feel free to ask Robert, Marvin, myself.
Mayor Paris, Sheriff Captain Johnson could also briefly address some of the graffiti from the Sheriff's Department's program and tagging crews if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to know why it's rising. You know, the other thing is, I think we need an education program. The problem with graffiti is not that it looks like heck. The problem with graffiti is it raises the fear level of the neighborhoods, which, when it reaches a certain tipping point, then we have an increase in kids joining gangs just because they're under this constant stress. It's certainly one of the most, has a high priority in this city to get rid of it. And anybody that volunteers to help in doing that, they're not just making it look better, they're making the whole neighborhood feel safer. And we need them to feel safe to be safe. So it's a huge benefit to the city of anybody who volunteers. I'm really happy you're doing this. Did you have something, are you going to tell us why it's increasing? Bob, your numbers keep going up. What is this?
Mayor, council members. The graffiti, first of all, I do have to commend the city for what you do do in taking it and removing it. And the general public, I think you're right. You can drive around this city, and I do every single day, and you can look around, and it's difficult to find. And that's because your city's removing it so quickly. The fact is, it is continuing to go up. And what we're finding is a vast majority of this is not necessarily gang-related, it's the tagging crews. Now, there's this fine line between a tagging crew and a gang, but the bottom line is the tagging crew is doing a vast majority of this. Our top team at the station is the one that oversees the graffiti enforcement. They've been doing an excellent job working with the city. They've identified who the top crews are. We have a list of those, I can get that for you. And that's what we go on, is we try to identify the top crews and the top offenders. We have a group of 10 that we always have monitored, the top 10 graffiti offenders by numbers. And it's pretty astonishing when you see the numbers that one individual can put up or one crew can do within a 24-hour period. And that's where those numbers are coming, is you'll see them go in, like Robert mentioned, into a neighborhood, and they'll just put up hundreds of incidents in one night, and then we'll get it and we'll remove it. But that's how we're going after it, and I will be honest with you, that due to some of the other issues going on with the city that we've had to kind of realign some of the duties of the top team, so I'll take responsibility for that, is that graffiti was put on a sideburner, so to speak, even though they're still enforcing it. We'll get our efforts back on that, especially knowing that the numbers are going up. And they do do a great job when their focus is on going after that taggers. And it's a lot like our enforcement with the gangs. When the tagging crew knows we're going after them, then you'll see things start to subside and even drop. And we can easily do that, get it back in the track for that.
Are we enforcing the sales of spray can paint ordinances?
We haven't been, at the station, we haven't been doing a whole lot of that enforcement. The primary effort of the top team is to go after the offenders, and that's what they've been doing.
Can't we transfer that to code enforcement and start having some stings?
Part of that, I'm not an expert on this. Yes, the answer is yes. I do know that most of the reputable stores obviously follow state law and have it under lock and key and all those things. But yeah, we can certainly do a sting or two operation. The other thing that we are doing is we're much more aggressive now, much, much more aggressive in restitution. We've made contacts with the courts, with the DA's office, and let them know that this is not a throwaway case. This is very important to the city, and consequently, we've been getting more out of that, too. You know, and one last thing is, and one of the things we've found to be very effective, we've done it with the gangs and we've done it with some of the crews, is the parents know when their son or daughter is involved in this activity. It's nearly impossible not to know. Every time we do a warrant at a tagging crew or an individual's house, the markings are all over their room. And when we talk with the parents, they claim they didn't know when it's so visible that they do. So a lot of the efforts have to go back to the parents in enforcing, you know, the rules of the house and the rules of the road, the rules of our community. Because if they would just start being a little more forceful in that side of it, it could dramatically decrease. Because I'm telling you, a lot of these individuals are relatively young. If we get on them now, then we can deter them in other activity. So we'll pick it up on our end, and I do think this is a great program, and the city's been doing a wonderful job keeping it covered up.
Thank you. You know, we really don't want deputies enforcing the paint sales. I mean, but we really should figure out a way to do that so we're not tying up deputies' time. We also might want to look at some volunteer program with the local bar association to sue the parents. I mean, they're liable up to $10,000. It's an easy case to do. It shouldn't be hard to get a group of lawyers to volunteer to do that. But I really think it's a huge issue we have to contend with. Okay?
I do know that we also have some, there are some online products, although they're not supposed to be, that are, I know that's where people get some of the stuff, too.
Well, that has all kinds of possibilities, doesn't it? Let's put a meeting together, see what we can do. Have Mr. Drico put that together. All right? Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. You're doing great stuff. I appreciate it. Any questions? New business two?
We need to vote on this.
Oh, we have to vote on it? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve MB1.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. That's sort of why we're here, isn't it? Okay, now, new business item two.
Minor technicality.
I'm actually here just to tee it up for Councilmember Mann and his lovely wife Rosemary, who did represent Mayor Paris and the city in Austria at the World Energy Awards. Awards are sort of funny things in that a lot of times, people think of awards as the end result of something, and I think, as you'll hear from Councilmember Mann, they're just the beginning. Awards help you make connections, give you credibility, and allow you to make better partnerships and advance what you're doing. So if you treat it right, and you apply for the right awards, and you're awarded the right, and you have stiff competition in these, you get credibility. And with credibility comes better contacts and the ability to promote the city and move forward on our alternative energy initiative. So this was a very significant award. It's an international award, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Mann to talk about it. We were first place in our category and third overall in the world. Mr. Mann?
First of all, I was not quite for sure what to expect, and I do want to go on record that both Mark and Jason, before I went, they prepped me on some of the finer points of the program that we were nominated for so I could ask questions once I was on stage. And they also told me, "Don't come home unless you win," and "Bring us money." So I just want to make sure that we've got that for record. So I was so impressed with the number of people. When we came into the city, and we thought we had a couple of pictures of some of the banners that were actually up on the buildings, but this was a group that got together, and they actually, there's several thousand people that actually attend this. Now, we're on the last day of the ceremony, because they do presentations over about a two-and-a-half-day period. And I'm going to guess, I'm going to estimate, there was probably, because it was at the end of the day, and there was probably close to 500 to 600 people present when we received the awards. There's five categories. There's earth, wind, air, fire, which is our category, and then the last one was education, and it was around children. And you can see pictures here. That's one of the awards, I think that one there was, as we're going through it real quick, was for earth, I believe. I'm sorry, that one there's for earth. And those awards, I found out that once you win, you know, we had to do a presentation. Originally, they told us we were going to speak about 30 seconds. I actually spoke for several minutes and was grilled and asked several questions about our project. The board votes on the eliminations. And in our category, there was three countries that were representative, the United States, obviously us representing the United States. The Netherlands was another nation, and then the third one was Israel. This is what was really impressive, is the board, and I believe it was made up of six members, if they got to choose who the overall winner, they would have chosen us. All of them came down afterwards, apologized, and said if they could have voted in the final run, we would have actually took first place. And there was 800 entries for these awards. Let me tell you what they were taken back with. And Mayor Paris, I think this is really, really, the award really goes to your initiative. They were so impressed that government could cut through red tape and make a difference. And they said that that was, they were so taken back about the project, the Solar Lancaster, and then, of course, the KB Home Project. But they were just enamored with the fact that here, a government is willing to cut through all the red tape, do what it takes, and really do what they say they're going to do. And they were so impressed with that. And time in and over and over again. That picture there is all five winners of all the categories, so... And I'm not for sure where that award is at. It's probably stuck in customs. It weighs about 50 pounds.
You didn't bring back the trophy?
We needed to get it through customs. It was barely, it was tough just for me getting home, so... But yeah, if you see, if it looks like that's waiting...
You better home!
Yeah, extremely heavy. So this is the chairman here, and I want to tell you, the type of people that attend this global energy consortium, I was able to meet on the first day, a gentleman by the name of Edward, and I think I'm pronouncing this right, Asen Yusu. He was for 20 years, he was the director of the Smithsonian Institute, and then he went on to be the chairman of the World Bank. So these are the type of people that actually sit on this board. Quite impressive. And him and I had an opportunity to have cocktails and spend several times together.
That is so cool. He's with the chairman of the World Bank. Wow!
Yeah, so let me tell you, it is well-received by the world. It's extremely impressive. And like I said, when you come into the city and see all these banners all over the building, the city hall, I was taken back. It's unfortunate that we don't have a picture of it. It is literally over a square block, and it looked like a cathedral. And if you, I mean, it's just...
You've been talking to Mark about a new city hall.
Yeah. I said, you know, if Rex was here, I said, "I'm positive he would be taken back like I was." And when you showed up to the city hall, in fact, I said, "Are you sure we're at city hall?" Because I thought we were at another cathedral. But I'm not exaggerating, it was literally a square block and probably, oh, I don't know, 10 to 15 stories tall, the city hall was. But anyway, thank you for letting me represent the city, Mayor Paris. And we need to go back and get the earth award. And we made some connections, and I've given Mark some key business cards because there was so many programs that we could implement here in Lancaster. I was just in awe of all. That's the award there. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. You know, what he's showing us is the fun part of the trip. What he's not showing us is the 12 hours being cramped in that airplane both ways. It's really a lot of effort, believe it or not, to go on these things. But we really should look at developing a program that we take more people with us because what we're seeing is we really are changing the world in this city. You know, it's having a global impact when they see what we're doing. And it doesn't seem, I mean, well, the staff does all the work, so I guess I really shouldn't say it, it doesn't seem that hard. But what I mean by that is, you know, it just seems to be limited by our imagination because all of the stuff that's thrown at us as obstacles don't seem to stay obstacles very long. You seem to overcome them. So I really would like to work on a way of getting some outside funding so we can take staff and citizens so they can really see what's happening. I mean, when you see it every day, it's no big deal. But when you see the world's reaction to it, what we're doing is portable. Other cities can do it. They see that they can do it. It is starting to have a huge impact, which you can now see. And I'm really glad you had the opportunity to do that. We're going to have to do more of it. Thank you. And I'm incredibly proud of staff for making that stuff happen. You know, again, I get to take the credit, you guys do all the work, and what you're doing is just over the top. Thank you. Okay. Sir, we need to allocate the money. Oh, and you came back with 10 grand, yeah, well, forget that.
And they paid for his hotel and trip.
Yeah. So it's kind of hard to take, huh?
I wasn't going to mention that part.
Well, it wasn't a city expense, so...
That's right, it was all free to the city. That's right. Okay, is there a vote, I mean, a motion?
I'd like to make the recommendation to appropriate the 10,000 prize to the accounts stated above, or stated on the recommendation, and accept the award.
Second. Thank you. It's unanimous. You know, we've also been nominated for the King Zayed Award, which is a million and a half-dollar prize. We're kind of hoping we win that one. And that's in Abu Dhabi, and it's all because of the alternative energy that we're engaged in. Council Agenda Item One, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Council report from Marvin Christ or...
I'll defer to Marvin.
On the AVTA, we did purchase 21 different buses. We have received 20 new buses at about $650,000 apiece. The AVTA is fiscally sound. We did implement a new dialer ride, and we did a six-month look at it. Eight of the 10 indicators are good for it. We have a new, or we're trying to get a new mobile command post. We have $150,000 to do that, so we're seeing if we can add CERT, the Fire Department, Sheriff Department, in the AVTA so we can all use it. We have a new mobility management plan which identifies the different transportation needs of the valley, and there will be new videos out on the AVTA. So for people that want to know how to use the rides and where to use them at, they'll be accessible at the AVTA website. And that's all.
Thank you. No action on the successor agency, no action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority. You know, we're getting a lot of authorities going. City manager, any announcements?
Yes, two. One, I'd like to reiterate on the 100-year AV High School. I hope everyone has the opportunity to go out to some of the festivities on the 12th, 13th, and 14th, because AV High School really has done a remarkable job of becoming an asset to this community, and I think it's up to the community to support AV High School, especially on the parade, the 12th. So hopefully, folks go out. Number two, sir, with your permission, I'd like to show a short video on Streets of Lancaster. But before I do that, one of, it seems like we do this over and over again, and it maybe gets lost, but I was personally so impressed with the work of our staff, the Streets of Lancaster, under the direction of Rhonda Perez, the Parks Department, and Robert Niels Cruz in Public Works. It was the smoothest by far. In fact, some of the folks in our Public Works Department, as an example, are so good that SCUZ is going to hire them for other events because they were better corner workers than the people that actually do the corners. than the people that actually do the corners. They weren't as busy in your corner this year, but still. But I was so impressed with how well the staff did and how organized it was, how every problem that came up had a solution before Jason or I even got involved. I mean, we really got to enjoy ourselves for three days because everything was handled, and that's a testament to Rhonda, Robert, the whole staff. It was great. And with that, I'd like to show a short video produced by our own Luke.
I won't show you flicking this. Hey, somebody sabotaged my car. I'm still waiting for that investigation to conclude. Hey, this is creative. Who did this? Good job.
Speed, hot nasty speed. Fastest street race in North America here this weekend. It's a warm one here today, definitely testing our drivers and their absolute fitness. They've got to be in great shape to run these cars in this kind of heat for the full distance. We're going to have a fight on our hands. Ladies and gentlemen, seven main events. Welcome to the Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix. So they'll come around here and grid up on the start line. They pull the clutch, knock it into first gear, mash the gas, pull away. These guys going 98 miles an hour and then hitting the brakes down to about 68 to hit this turn. It's so cool. Yellow flags fly over and they enter the turn number two as well as one other incident, turn two.
I haven't seen this much participation in the city by any stretch. Really cool to see that much, a city getting that involved in something like this. Really pretty awesome.
This is a great event because it really helps our local businesses and it brings our community together.
So did you guys race? You raced?
A couple years ago. I don't mind the patients.
Kitty did get sprayed by a lot of champagne, though. Kitty didn't race? Do we have a report from the fire department and the sheriff's department on who won?
I'm glad you asked, sir. I believe Captain Johnson would like to give that report.
We did take the title, and it was a close race, but not close enough. I'm really confident, once we're able to recruit that young man from earlier into the Explorer Program, we'll be able to retain this title for several years to come.
That's genius.
Who came in last?
You did. Did you come in last?
No, not me. It wasn't me.
Okay.
It was my filling, maybe. In all defense of him, he had an opportunity to take out the city manager, and he chose not to, so.
I didn't listen to you like last year.
I didn't take you out.
Yes, you did.
I was in the hospital, for heaven's sakes. How did I take you out? Councilmember Mann? Did you get taken out? They did get in my way. All right, city clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible so that, if necessary, the city council, the city manager, and city staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, council members. My name is Gary Burgess, and I'm proud to say that I'm a resident of Lancaster. I think I could find it humorous if it wasn't so serious, that we as humans can build into our lives greatness, joy, and happiness, and in the same breath, almost, we can destroy that which we created. I think that can be said of the Boulevard. I speak of the vendor kiosks located in the center of the Boulevard. Some of the same people who were able to guide the improvements on the Boulevard are now either guiding or keeping quiet while others guide a detraction and an unwelcome sight taking place on the Boulevard. The installation of the vendor kiosks on the Boulevard, in my opinion, should be stopped before any more misguided work is accomplished. Just this morning, while riding my bike, which I enjoy doing down the Boulevard and seeing all the improvements daily, or weekly or monthly, I watched a worker mark off the location for additional kiosks to be installed. As I stood there and looked west, the Boulevard appeared in all its glory, a very pleasant scene. While looking east, I viewed the currently installed kiosk near the El Pac, which blocked the view down the center of the street. Soon we will have vendors selling their wares from structures which will remind some of us of a third-world country and their shopping bazaars. Is this what we want in Lancaster on the Boulevard? I personally don't think so, since we are so proud of our upscale restaurants located there and the improved meeting place for all. In closing, I would like to say that I feel our citizens would be better served if we used the spaces to be taken by the kiosks for other purposes. One of those purposes could be putting in some handicap parking spots on the Boulevard, since at the present time, there is none on Lancaster Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
And I got back...
Thank you, Gary.
Can I have a few more seconds on something else on the graffiti thing? I am a volunteer at the sheriff's station, which we know, and one of our tasks is to remove signs that are illegally posted. And it's kind of a pet project of mine. I enjoyed doing it. And I feel that the signs that these people post, which right now we got one, "We rent houses, call us," Section 8 approved. And there's numerous, and I haven't taken any down in the last week or two, and these have been up. And also, you know, "Get your tattoos at Pomona." And we've all seen the signs. And I consider those graffiti. So when I go out on patrol or I make a special day, me and my partner, that's what I enjoy doing, is taking those down, so.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate that.
Hi, how are you? Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dawn Dykhouse, and I'm here to speak about the concerns I have, along with many others I've spoken to in my community, about having so many solar fields installed in our community. As I said at the planning commission meeting, I grew up in Anlo Bakers, and I attended Delsir School from 3rd through 8th grade, and then went on to attend high school in the area. After my husband got out of the Navy, we moved home, and it was always in the plan to move back to the Lancaster area. And we decided on Anlo Bakers so that my children could attend Delsir School, and we could raise them in the rural lifestyle that we grew up in as members of the 4-H Club, being surrounded by agriculture, not thousands of acres of solar. Now, I'd like to make it clear, I'm not speaking of solar for on top of existing buildings. These parking structures, I think, are great. However, as a parent, I'm deeply disturbed about the number of solar fields being installed in our area. I ask you, the members here of the planning commission, when you discuss these projects and make decisions about their approval, that you take into consideration the number of projects being proposed. Between the projects under the city of Lancaster and LA County, there are approximately 33 sites being proposed in the Anlo Bakers community. We are completely surrounded by solar. Four of these sites completely surround Delsir School, one approved in September, another in February, and then two more being approved just at the last council, I'm sorry, commission. Please help us to preserve the way of life that many of us longed for when we decided to move here with our children. Contrary to what was said at the planning commission by one of the members on September 17th, it is not a, quote, "sad" way of life in the rural areas. We love our agriculture and our wide-open spaces, and I'm here to ask you to listen to the opinions of the people whose lives this number of solar being installed is going to affect. Please put yourselves in our shoes and ask yourselves how you would feel if your homes were to be surrounded by thousands of acres of solar, decreasing your home's value substantially and ruining the dreams that you had for raising your children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry it takes so long.
That's okay.
Commission and the public, I'm Vianna Fris, and I wanted to let you know about the bus service and my experiences on the bus service. I had a stroke in 2002, and I've been on the buses since then. I have been enjoying the buses. But lately, they've taken 20 buses off of Avenue Q to Lake LA. There's now four-hour wait between buses on Avenue Q. For me to go to my senior center in Palmdale and over to my son's house takes three hours to go one mile. I go from 10th Street East to 15th Street East, takes three hours. To go from Avenue J to Avenue K takes three hours. I wanted to let you know this. And this last week, the air conditioning in two buses broke down. In one of these new buses, we all had the windows open. In one of these new buses, this was a second bus, the air conditioning did not work. So I'm going to keep an eye on it and let you know what's going on. I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you look into that?
Sure.
Thank you. Mrs. Fris, if you'll talk to that gentleman in the very back, back there. That's the chairman of the AVTA, and he'll help you.
Yeah, I care about Lake LA and our surrounding areas on the east side. I think we abandoned...
Norm.
Thank you.
We'll fix it.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards. Any comments from the council before we adjourn to executive session? We're now going to go to executive session and deal with the existing litigation under Government Code, Section 549, 56.9A. We're back in session. City manager, I mean, city attorney.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council met in closed session under Government Code, Section 549, 56.9A, concerning the Community Action League case, gave direction to council concerning the handling of that case. Also, with respect to the Palmdale versus Lancaster case, the case has been appealed by the city of Palmdale. Not quite sure their logic of doing that in light of the dissolution of redevelopment agencies and the inability for them to get anything out of it. But they have appealed it and will be moving forward on that. Council gave direction in connection with that matter to have the city manager send a letter to Mr. Dispenza and Mr. Hoffbauer to have a meeting with the mayor and council member Christ, as soon as possible, to discuss that matter, to see if there's some way that we can't stop spending public funds on a needless lawsuit. And then also announced that the Rubin case has been set for oral argument, I think it's first week of November, on November 8th, in the Court of, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in Pasadena.
Okay. At the next council meeting, report on Mr. Hoffbauer's response if the meeting hasn't taken place. Okay. Thank you. I guess we're adjourned. Hold on, let me do the thing.
Housing Authority meeting is adjourned until October 9, 2012, at 5:00 p.m.
The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, October 9, 2012, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, I'm coming home.